Um, everybody, I'd like to welcome you to the City of Angels March 7th, 2023 City Council Meeting. Uh, roll call please. Rose.
Mayor Herndon.
Present.
Vice Mayor Walikata.
Present.
Councilmember Tisornian.
Present.
Councilmember Borleo.
Present.
Councilmember Scherrato is absent. Staff is present.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, report out of closed session. Um, item A is being continued to another meeting, and items B and C direction was given to staff. Takes us to item number four, approval of the agenda as posted or amended. Anyone has any recommendations for amending the agenda? Any members of the public? Okay, bring it back. I'm looking for a motion on the approval.
So for some of them.
Seconds?
Second.
Got a first and a second on favor?
Aye.
Passes on a 401. Item five, public comment. The public may address the council on any item of public interest not otherwise on the agenda that is within the jurisdiction of the city. No action may be taken. Matters to be addressed may be referred to city staff or placed on a subsequent meeting agenda. Speakers will be limited to five minutes per person. Any members of the public for public comment? Mr. Stammerjohn.
Good evening, council. Uh, do I need to have that closer?
You're good.
Okay. Um, good evening. Uh, do I need to state my name and?
Yes, please.
Matt Stammerjohn. I live at, uh, 313 Acorn Drive. And I have, uh, a business here in the city limits and one right on the edge of the city limits. Um, this weekend I discovered out from my walk, uh, in the neighborhood in Greenhorn Creek, there are two video cameras, uh, on light posts going into McCauley Ranch Road and Selkirk Road. And, uh, it, it, there's a sign there. It says it's, it's, uh, being monitored. Um, I just wanted to bring that to the council's attention if they didn't know already. Uh, I, I've never heard of it being okay to post cameras on a, on a public, in a public space like that. I mean, I have cameras in my office. I have cameras at my storage facility. Uh, a lot of times it's not admissible in court. The police love to come look at them. Uh, but, uh, my good question is who are these being monitored by? Is it being monitored by, I, I mean, who, who's got the authority to put that up? So, big question. Um, I, I, uh, I'm not opposed to having a deterrent. Um, and I'm all about safety and, but I, there's just no oversight with this, uh, being on public property and in a public right of way without any public approval. Um, and it's kind of disconcerting, I think. So, just wanted to bring it to your attention. I hope something's done about it. And, um, that's about all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public? How about online or public comment? But it says what?
It says 5:00 PM on the top.
No, that's, it's just the name of the meeting. Got it. But there's nobody online.
Nobody online.
Okay.
So. Um, moving on then to item number six, consent agenda. We have two items on consent, A and B. Looking for, um, a motion or anybody to discuss consent items?
No.
Nobody can move. Any members of the public want to pull an item from consent? Okay, so yeah, we're looking for a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All approved?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes 401. Rose. Item seven, regular agenda. Um, item A. Resolution 2326 awarding contract and authorizing the city administrator to execute said contract for designing and constructing the Utica Park expansion and renovating and renovation with Robert E. Boyer, construction业.
Mayor, council members, um, as you recall, we've already awarded the contract for doing the, um, children's playground. We then sent out an RFP for doing the rest of the work, if you will. And we did receive one proposal. We had 43 people look at it. 36 actually pulled the plans and one actually bid on it. Um, some people were hesitant to build because they wanted to have all the design done before they ever bid on building it. And we basically wanted to see if we could get somebody to do design and build. Um, it helps save money and it has been our experience that often people will spend all the money designing it and have no money left to build it. So we did get one proposal and it was, um, I'll let Rebecca go into the details. For 2.2 million and basically it's Boyer out of Sonora. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. Um, Rebecca can answer any questions about the contract.
Um, so the one, uh, thing on this is the idea was the playground was on a different schedule than this. Um, and in, in reviewing the response, uh, if it had been responses, but it was just one response, the concern was what happens if the site plan, because they're, this contractor would really be doing the site plan, is at a different level grade than what playground would need to be. So then you're trying to fit square peg and round hole after the fact. So we did, um, have a discussion with, um, the community club as well as the Kelgris, um, community foundation in terms of, let's just keep working through this. Let's, let's kind of still try to work as quickly as we can on getting the playground done. But, um, let's try to align the schedule with this and that so that we would have the conversation after the site plan is done. So, um, so far that there's been positive feedback on that. We, um, are confident that we'll be able to get an extension with use of those funds. Because remember, we did that agreement that you would have it all spent by October. Um, so we're going to still keep moving forward, but we're going to really focus on the site plan here. And then that will give us the ability to make sure that the playground needs to go where the playground needs to go instead of trying to build around the playground that in a perfect world would have either gone somewhere else or been in a different elevation or whatever it needed to be. So, um, uh, and then we also had a discussion with Speck who had been awarded the, uh, contract for the playground. And they're, they're kind of relieved by that because they have the same concerns. So, um, we're going to kind of have them work together. Um, it still works. It, it kind of was like a perfect set of circumstances because I think Speck is going to just be a really phenomenal playground designer. Um, whereas Boyer is going to be a really phenomenal parks designer. Um, so two kind of different, um, I don't know, design spectrums. But I think it all ends up working out the way it needed to work out anyway. It's just we're going to align the timing so we're not, um, we're not finding ourselves, uh, second guessing where things should have gone. Um, so I'm really excited. He's really, really excited. Um, he loves the opportunity when there's a local project that he can work on because he, he lives around here. So, um, we're, we're excited to get this going. They're excited to get this going. And, um, we're hoping we can get through the site, site design and then actually start talking about design design um, for both the, uh, expansion and the playground, which again will be a collaborative, um, process.
Hold this, thank you, second.
Um, I think the calendar was, what, in, oh, May? It is actually in your pack and I believe they have their timeline on page 27 of their proposal, which is actually attachment A to B.
I'm sorry?
So basically they design and the site, so plan creation and.
Oh.
It looks like. End of April, they were.
Oh.
Yeah, so I think it's end of April.
Okay.
To early May.
Early May.
So plan creation, April 24th to May 19.
Gotcha. And then these two worked before? Worked together?
Yeah.
I don't, not, I don't know. We're, we're a little lucky in that our representative with Speck is from Sonora and Boyer is from Sonora and they know each other.
Oh, okay.
So that was sort of a loop. Um, so we're hoping that will help with that.
And I have one more question. So in the top here, it talks about, where was it? Um, separate community development block CDD, funding of 167 will be spent on the new bathroom. And then down in the bullet points, it says construct one new bathroom building? Is that, is there going to be two restrooms there or just one?
So it will depend on what our budget is as we go forward.
Okay.
Technically, we're required to have a bathroom by the time we're done. And if we can afford two, we'll have two. Um, if we have to go back somewhere, we'll have one.
Okay.
We met today, by the way, with, uh, proposers who will have a deadline of March 17th for submittals. And hopefully we'll have somebody on board for prefab bathrooms ASAP.
Okay. Um, I have one more while you're there. What's the Angels Creek Trailhead kiosk?
So.
Why do I not, I don't remember. I remember all the other ones, but I don't remember that one.
Because of, so it's a recreation and tourism grant, we wanted to tie it into the Angels Creek Trail. And because the park can in fact be a trailhead, go down bush and connect into the trail, we decided to put a kiosk there so that if people wanted to stage their, um, for all like biking and stuff, they could. And we would have a, a little display there that would show where the trail goes.
Thank you.
Okay. My question is how are we going to care for this facility once it's all built up, beautiful and glorious?
So that is all, um, things that we have to talk about and that's also included in part of your strategic planning. So, um, those are things that we have to look at.
What do you own that week?
She's really good at landscaping. Um, you know, I just think about the maintenance. It's going to be beautiful. It's going to be great. And I just want to have nice things, so.
Um, yeah, there, I think, um, there are going to be lots of things that are going to be happening in the city that are going to have to be addressed in terms of how you maintain them. Um, it's not just going to be the park. There's a whole slew of projects that are happening that we will then take ownership of. So those are things that we're going to have to embody in our, um, maintenance operations going forward as well as, um, if there is community support in terms of, you know, how to secure the park. So we'll, we'll have to address that, um, as part of our ongoing plans, but.
Okay, looking for any members of the public giving comments about our Utica Park. Anybody online, Rose?
Nobody on.
Okay, so bringing it back, we do, uh, need a motion for Resolution 2326 that it works the contract as well as the city administrator to execute the contract.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2326.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Passes on a 401. Thank you for that. It's going to be exciting.
Yeah.
It's going to be beautiful. Should be able to generate quite an income renting it and stuff too.
Yeah, so, yeah, so those are. So those are things that we'll have to look at. So, um, like when you look at the Murphy's Park, that is a county-owned park, but the county does not maintain it. So, um, the Murphy's Club does. And the Murphy's Club generates revenues. And then those revenues in turn help to maintain that park. So we may have to look at different types of things like that. Um, so we'll, yeah, we'll be looking at all of that.
Nice. Moving on to item 7B, um, let's see here. Approve Resolution 2327 approving the purchase of a police vehicle and amending amendment of the 2023 fiscal year budget. Rebecca.
Okay, so, um, Chief Ellis was in the process of, because it's budget development time right now, um, in looking at just kind of getting initial lay of the land so he could contemplate replacement of a vehicle next fiscal year. And in that, he, um, was, uh, notified that there was actually a vehicle on site that had been canceled from another agency. So there was kind of, uh, kind of two ways we could have gone with this. We could have just said, um, hmm, yeah, great, no, thank you. We'll put it in the 2324 fiscal year budget. Um, and then we'll hope for the best, best case. Um, I would say at this point with how things are going, we would put the order in and we would receive it in 24, 25. That's the reality. So, um, we're trying to really, uh, make sure that we're staying on top of that fleet. And I think as of, what, last week, there were two vehicles that were down?
Uh, one that's having a new, uh, motor.
Yeah.
The second, uh, we had, we had two Dodge Chargers, like a 17, a 19 or something like that having in here. But, uh, one of them has already had a new motor put in it after 56,000 miles. Um, the second one, we took it in for an oil change and when they were checking it out, they saw, uh, metal flakes in it. So we took it to Dodge and it needs a new motor, um, as well. Luckily, it's still under warranty. Both were under warranty, so it's being replaced with, you know, no cost to us. But obviously you get a new motor put in and you don't know what other problems are going to be caused by it. So, yeah, we have one vehicle that's down and then we have three vehicles that are, two that are at 125,000 miles and one that's at 100,000 miles that are all still in service as service vehicles.
Right.
So.
So.
And our, just so you know too, our current, the, the K-9 vehicle that was budgeted a year ago and last year's budget, we still haven't received that vehicle. We started that process last March and we're supposed to be getting it in the next week or two. And then it still has to be outfitted with all the equipment, decals, radios, computers and all of that kind of stuff. So that's the kind of the timeframe of vehicles, um, right now, getting police vehicles at least. I spoke with Downtown Ford who has the government contract pricing for the Ford Police Interceptors. They're anticipating those going up to where you can actually start the purchasing process in June or July. But they also expect about a $10,000 increase in the prices for those vehicles next year. Um, so that's another reason why I went to Rebecca to say, here's our options, um, for vehicle replacement. And just during my conversation with the fleet person at Downtown Ford, they said, well, we happen to have an agency just recently canceled one of the vehicles they had orders sitting in our lot right here. And they sent me the specs on it and it's basically the same vehicle that we, the 2020 Ford Explorer that we have in service now. Except for this one's a 2020, the one that we'd like to buy with your approval is a 2022.
So, so not only does it save us the increase that we would have to pay next year, um, but we're getting the vehicle. Um, we need to get it as opposed to a year from when we need to get it. Um, so the recommendation is to go ahead and just pull the trigger on it now, get it purchased. We would not, um, we wouldn't include a vehicle purchase in the 2324 budget. Um, because it's like now we'll kind of catch up for a minute and then we'll probably see something.
Reevaluate the following year to see where we're at with the vehicles that we currently have and the mileage on them at that point.
Yeah. And the other thing is, um, up, the upfitting of the vehicles, um, it just keeps, it just keeps going.
Everything.
So, but like dramatically higher. So, um, that's another aspect of, the longer we wait on that, then it's just going to be more expensive. So, um, I think this is a really good option, um, that just kind of came, came to fruition. Um, we would utilize, uh, general fund unassigned balance, just basically reserves that are in the general fund. Um, and there is also about 18,000 left in the capital budget for the police department. But, um, the upfitting, the MDT communications and all of that are estimates. So if something happens between now and when we can get the installs of that, then at least we have a little room for that as well.
Is this a brand new?
Yeah.
Vehicle? Okay.
Do you get, do we sell it afterwards?
Yeah.
Did, did we have an account set up? I'm pulling out.
So if, if we sell, if we surplus equipment, then we take those funds and then we put it in our general fund equipment reserve.
I thought, okay. I thought there was something that went directly to you guys and directly to Fire. I thought it was.
It's, it's, it's general fund dollars. So, so.
So go back in the.
Ironically, it has gone, like they earmarked it for police and fire. The reality is that's council's decision, whatever you want to do. But, um, it's, it's, if, if general fund purchased it, then surplus just goes back to the general fund. And we have just reserved those, um, those surplus dollars into a separate fund that just sit there and accumulate that can be used in the future.
I think we use one year's of that money for, to update or to get mapping software in the vehicles.
Yeah, something like that.
Um, for the vehicle.
Yeah.
Yeah, we just kind of, I just remember we kind of kept it with you guys and Fire. We kind of kept it with them.
Yeah.
There was some different funds available.
Yeah.
But you're not going to sell it so you can get the new one anyways.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's all I have.
So, um, yeah, so I, you know, I think it's a good idea. I think, um, are they holding it for you?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just spoke with them today, in fact, and they, actually I talked to them last week. They said they were going to hold it. And I confirmed today and they said they're just waiting to hear from us regarding confirmation for the purchase.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, any public comment on this item?
Rose online?
Anybody online? All right, so what are we thinking about Resolution 2327 for a new police vehicle?
I will make the motion.
In a second?
I'll second it.
Yeah.
All right, we have a first with Isabel, a second with Alvin. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 401.
Expensive car.
Yeah, we'll call that. Item 7C.
But you don't feel the fancy lights?
Because they are fun.
The car wasn't bad. Well, regarding.
No, it's all about price.
No, it's literally not.
It wasn't about price. It's when you house it with all these.
Decals are two for having a cage.
Okay, item 7C, approve Resolution number 2328 rescinding Resolution number 2153 and approve Resolution 2329 authorizing city administrator to submit a financial assistance application to the State Water Resource Control Board for the City of Angels Water Treatment Plant upgrade, update with project name. Rebecca.
Um, okay, so the original, uh, resolution, the project was called Water Treatment Plant Improvement Project. But the application that was submitted was the City of Angels Water Treatment Plant Upgrade. Um, they're very strict on the name. So we need to, uh, because the project has already gone so far through the process with State Water Board and, um, environmental review. If we were to change the name with them, it would have to go back through environmental review. So, uh, we decided just keep the name the way that it is on that side. It's easier for us to go ahead and change the resolution name. That's all this is. So, um, and then we're just, I'm just letting you know, since the initial scoping, it's, it's increased to 7 million because I think in the original resolution it was 4,050,000. It's now 7 million.
All great. It's all, it's still enough grant at 7 million?
Well, for, for first case, yeah.
So basically we're just changing the name.
We're just changing.
On our side to City of Angels Water Treatment Plant Upgrade.
Yep.
And then you're submitting a financial assistance application in 2320, the Frazo 2329?
Uh, we're just updating the information.
Just updating, okay.
With the updated.
Yep. 7 million dollars.
Yep.
All right. Everybody got that?
Mm-hmm.
Anybody have any questions or comments? Members of the public? Okay, bringing it back, looking for a motion.
Still move.
Second. I'll second it. Me. And any opposed? Or all in favor, I should say?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, passes 401. Item D, approve Resolution 2331 for the General Fund Reserve Policy.
Okay, so, um, in the City Gate Strategic Plan, please, one, they talked about, um, adopting policies. And in the City Gate, uh, Strategic Plan, please, two, they talk about adopting policies. So, um, I think, you know, what's, when you adopt a policy, if you want it to be, um, like, a true policy that is, can, can continue to live, right? So everyone can always go back to it. You really want it to be adopted by resolution. Because if it's just adopted by minute order or if it's just adopted as part of another document, it gets lost in the shuffle. And so your best practice is really to, um, finitely adopt policy by resolution and then make sure you have a dedicated numbering scheme so that it's always clear what you're talking about. And if you're going to amend the policy, you're amending 300 dot 011 or 100 dot whatever, or whatever it needs to be. So, um, we're in the process of creating a numerical scheme for all of the different policies. So whether it's administrative policies, whether it's, um, you know, financial policies or HR policies or whatever it is, so we would have a very clear, um, numbering scheme. Each one of those policies would be dedicated to a particular section or multiple sections. And then that information would then ultimately create a citywide policy document, right? So, in preparation for the budget, um, I thought it was very important to start with this guy right here, which is the General Fund Reserve Policy. So, uh, the nice part is the, uh, the, the GFOA Government Finance Officers Association, they've already really established best practices specifically for, for finance policies. So it's not like we have to reinvent the wheel. We can use those best practices to, um, identify what, what we need to do. Um, in the 2018 plan, City Gate had, um, recommended us to develop policies to build reserves to assist the city to establish and maintain a stable financial health. And at that time, they had recommended a 5% economic uncertainty reserve, a 5% exposure reserve and a 10% urgency reserve. In 2019, staff presented to council as part of the budget. So if you were to look at the budget document, there's a financial policy document within there. And it stated, um, a, a policy that, what the city would do in terms of its, uh, its reserve. And it's fine, um, except you would only find this if you looked at the budget. You don't find it as a standalone policy. And, um, and that's where it really needs to be a standalone policy because it's that important. And so you want to make sure, you know, if I'm gone or Michelle's gone or a new council comes in, it's that policy. So if someone wanted to amend the policy, you're truly having to amend a resolution. Um, so the, um, current policy, the reserve would be 1.2 million based on the current policy that is contained within the budget.
And that's 25% or 20%?
That is a 25% of operating budgets, of the operating budget, expenditures, which is the equivalent of three months of operating expenditures.
Okay.
So, um, and that is a minimum of. So, and that is a minimum of best practice. So based on what the current policy is in that budget document, it'd be 1.2. We currently have 4 million. So that's a 78% reserve, which is an unheard of reserve for a city. It's very good. So, but there's other things that we could do without falling off the cliff with it. So it's probably, and I say this, it's probably one of the highest reserves in the nation, because nobody has a 78% reserve. You just don't do it. Now, it's a really good position to be in, but I also understand, you know, kind of where we came from. And I also understand that there is still hesitancy on not having sufficient reserves, given where we were coming from, from an economic perspective. So if you take the, have a 25% general reserve, right, that's going to be currently based on the budget that we have of 5 million, I think we have 5.1 in operating expenditures, that would be 1,275,000. And then I would recommend that we would have a 10% economic stability reserve. And that would be based on our current budget, 510,000. So the policy itself kind of talks about, you know, what this means, what it's for, why you have it, what happens if you need to dip into it, and, you know, what you need to do in order to build it back. And the benefit of having strong reserves like that is it helps our credit rating if we need to go out to borrow, if we needed to bond, if we needed to do any form of debt service whatsoever at all. You want to have a good credit rating. So your credit rating is obviously much better if you have considerable reserves. And even a 35% reserve, which is what's recommended in here, the 25% general reserve, as well as the 10% economic stability reserve, that is very, that's a very good, good reserve. So the budget process should incorporate thresholds that would be adopted in this policy. And if there was ever a need to get into those reserves, you would make it, it would only be used for one-time expenditures. That's it. So you would, if you needed to dip into it because something has happened, it would be not to grow staff. It wouldn't be to grow, to offset additional operating expenditures, it'd be fine. It would have to be, I need to replace that thing. I need, it's that one-time expense that you're going to be hit with it. And then from there, then the city would have to focus on rebuilding that reserve. So then going forward, if you had to pull 500,000 dollars out, you'd commit to putting that 500,000 dollars back in. But ideally, you just never hit the reserve. And so this change also helps us focus on multi-year investments, because we would be able to plan, you know, I think when I come and I say, we need 50,000, or we need this 40,000, or the 30, or the 17, the response is, well, what happens next year? Well, what about next year? And you don't see next year, because we've just got this singular year of budget, which is why we will also be making sure that we're doing that multi-year budget forecast, so that we really can say, well, number one, it's on one-time expenses, and next year, it's not there. Or based on the projected revenue, you know, trends, or based on the projected expenditure trends, we have the resources in the upcoming years to offset that. So, and, and the other thing to consider is, there could certainly be times where I may come to you and say, okay, I need 100,000 of the, you know, and not necessarily the 1.78 million, but the other portion that is undesigned, to say, I need this 100,000 or 150,000. It is for ongoing costs, but we need time to develop a funding scheme for that. And those would be situations where, you know, we're committing to a year or two, but with the understanding that that year or two is our time to work on the funding scheme going forward, whether that's a tax initiative, whether that's an assessment, whether that is a different fee, or whatever it is. But those would all have to be conversations of part of that item or part of that budget. So we are, we're not recommending, like, really, right now, at this very moment, any sizable reductions in the current unassigned balance. But there is $2 million that we would need to contemplate in the 2324 budget, following the adopted strategic plan. So we will be looking at those, the council directives of year one, tier one through three objectives and principles in the next strategic plan. And if there are things that we need to put into place, there's $2 million that we can look at as a potential funding source to offset some of those investments, whether it's, you know, to pay for a study to get us to that point, or whatever it needs to be. But we've got funds available that we can do that. Or we might have, you know, we might need to come up with an equipment replacement plan over the next five years. And the other thing is, this is general fund. This does not have anything to do with water or wastewater. It is just a general fund. So I'm recommending that council approve this policy, and then make it official by adopting resolution 2331.
Give me one second. Sorry, I'm writing some numbers down here. Everybody in the best have a question? Okay. So we're talking about, right now, we have, what is the number, $4 million?
Roughly, yeah.
Roughly, for a rough number, we'll tell you. Okay, so roughly $4 million in this reserve pool. You're talking about doing 25% of the general reserve, which is 1.275 million. And then also keep a 10% economic stability reserve, which is 510, which is 1.785, 178,000. Good. Okay. Yes?
I know what you mean.
So that means we have $2,725,000 left out of that $4 million pool. And then you're wanting to take 2 million-
Well, I'm just-
Usually appropriate 2 million will be contemplated in the 2324.
It's going to be, it's going to be whatever it is, because we have it closed. So I'm not even saying do anything with this dollar amount, but it's going to be, between now and the end of the fiscal year, it's going to be somewhere, right? It's going to be-
A portion of-
Some amount could be 2 million, it could be 2.9, it could be 2.5, it could be whatever that overage ends up being. And then even the next budget could be different, because the next budget, maybe it's not 5.1 million dollars in operating. Maybe it's only 4.7, or maybe it's 6.2. So it's going to fluctuate that number, depending on whatever the operating budget-
Correct.
-is for that next year.
Right, but you're talking, for rough numbers, you're talking about spending $2 million-
Not necessarily. But we need to plan to do something with it, whether we, whether it's decided, we need to, you know, based on the strategic plan, right? We identify some, some, the objectives, we identify projects that we can do within those, and we say, we need to invest in economic grants. And you could say, okay, well, let's take 750,000 of this, and reserve that specifically for economic development grants. And that doesn't have to be spent in 2324. That could be spent in 2324, 2579. You could, we could, you know, identify something in those objectives in terms of beautification, or parking, or whatever is in there within that element of the general plan item that we need to deal with. We could associate that with these dollars. Doesn't mean it's going to actually do an outlay on 2324, but it means we've identified-
The funding.
The funding source-
Correct.
-for whatever that activity is.
For the year one, tier one, two and three.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Is that what I'm saying?
No, I-
So it doesn't mean we have to spend it.
No, I know. It doesn't mean we have to spend it.
Down. Is that what you're saying? It's kind of like, why would we-
I just hate putting a dollar amount, something in there. I mean, I'm all for, poof. I just have a hell of a chunk of change.
Yes.
It's my purse strings, and I'm-
But when you do this-
I know.
There is no, there will be no public support for growth of revenue anymore. You can't, you're overseeing.
I know, I know, I know. We have, I know, we already have, we already have the 1.2 million in the bank, and we already got 510, and now-
It starts weakening our ability to say, we can't afford to fix that revenue. I can't afford to do this.
I know. Well, hey, you got 2.75 million. I know.
Can we not, can we not raise the percentages of our savings? Like, you know, like, can we raise them each 5 or 10%?
You can do whatever you want.
Right, so that's what I'm saying, so that we would have money that would be sitting there for reserve.
I mean, I'm good with three-month operating. That's fine. I'm just, we saved it, I saved it, and I have trouble letting it go, if that makes sense. That's my own personal, that's my own personal thing.
But again, your reserve is there because there's a reason to have it, right? So you want reserves there for your credit rating. You want reserves there in case there's an emergency. You want reserves there in case you have extremely volatile revenue. So there's reasons why you would have the reserves that you have. Some jurisdictions may only have a 25% reserve, that's it. There's nothing else, because they've got pretty, pretty standard revenue. There's not a lot of volatility in what they do. We have more volatility in our revenue, because we've got sales tax and TOT. But if you say, well, you know, maybe you're not comfortable with the 10% economic stability but, at the end of the day, 510,000 is still quite a bit of money if you're looking at it that perspective. So, you know, we can have it be higher than that, we can not have it.
Will we adjust this, you, from here? This is creating a policy right now.
This is, this is creating the policy right now. Every year-
We'll relook at it.
We have to relook at, not relook at the policy, we have to relook at the amount in the reserve, because your budget is going to change every year.
Every year.
So every year, every year, what we do is we say, okay, step one, we have to fund, we have to fund the reserve. So based on what we have-
Move it up.
We have to have 25% here, and we have to have 10% there. Done. Okay, now, here's what's left. So if-
And that's how we got built up to the 70% that we have.
It was rough.
I know.
Yeah, that's my only thing, is I know we're not going to spend any less.
You got built up here because you did not follow your reserve policy.
Right.
You just said, we're not going to spend-
We got, we got stingy.
We're not going to spend-
But then we helped that this year with how many, you know-
We had to spend quite a bit.
Right, and I'm all for it.
Okay. Does it have any bearing on us getting grants or being like a hardship or economically poor community if we have higher reserves, like if we went up to 35 and 10, or percent, you know, instead of the 25 and 10? Like, does it matter to them when they're looking?
They feel less bad for us when we say, we don't have money for the match, because they're going to say, well, yes, you do have money for the match, right?
I mean, I'd like, I'd like the, I mean, I'm a super saver, like, I stash money everywhere.
Cool.
Like, oh, that's in your pocket, and that's a profit.
Well, and I think what's important to understand, this is just the general fund.
Right, so I-
This is not even the general fund project fund, which has probably a million dollars in it.
And then we found the money, and we worked from UWPA, right? There's that little stash of money we haven't found yet.
There's, we have funds all over the place. This is just the general fund portion.
But I, yeah, I get it. But I feel like being able to go, hey, Scott, let's buy the car. Bam, it's done, and we got the money to do it today. So that's, I'm just-
That's why it's like, again, it's going back to the strategic plan.
I know.
And it's looking at all of those that we've identified as priorities. So if, if within there, we look at it and we go, you know, we really, in order to meet this objective, we really do need to have appropriate equipment replacement schedules. And if that's the case, well, we may have to look at a portion of this money to be seed money for the equipment replacement, because there's not enough money in the general fund equipment reserve.
Correct.
That's earmarked for police and fire, if they need, you know, to replace a fleet, or if we needed a new fire truck. That's not going to happen. But those are all the, you know, those are the things that we have to contemplate based on that strategic plan. That's the benefit of having a strategic plan, is that we can keep going back to it to say, okay, this is what we committed to, these are their priorities. So we do, to some degree, have to loosen up a little bit on here, because we can't make those strategic plan things happen.
I've been loose all over the place. IT and cars, and I'm just giving you that time. I really, the salary, I'm just giving you that time.
We can't make those investments if we keep holding on to this money.
We need to spend it.
So I have a question. On the policy itself, on page two in the bracket, is that not supposed to say 25 and 10?
Um, sorry, yes. Thank you.
Thanks. Where it says, in the- In the bracket, right there.
Oh, right here.
Up in the, in the table.
Throw a five on the twenty.
And then- Oh, then there it says 25, but then in there, I was like, well, how are we going from 25 to 20?
Oh, right here.
Yeah.
Yep.
Anybody else?
Take the $2 million out of there. Lord, it kills me.
Get excess.
I'm kidding. Yeah.
No, I mean, I like, I like saving, so rainy days are a lot.
You lost everything.
If we use that with it towards a new city, don't we?
We're going to do that for a question.
That's a whole other thing.
Yeah, it's a different reserve.
Hey, Roll, you want to talk about the savings? Okay, I'm going to squirrel.
That's perfect. I love that.
Okay.
But, okay, but seriously, if, if, if there's a fund that's for, what are we calling this one, economic stability, and if we're putting 10%, 10%, 10% away, this is not a bad problem to have. But at what point in time do we say, wow, we haven't had any reason to be unstable, so we built back up again, or we are-
Well, it's not 10% every year. It just stays the same.
Just stay, oh, I'm thinking we're putting 10% away every year.
It just stays at 10%.
It doesn't go-
Right, now that we've put the 10% in-
So if our budget budget waits, we have to make sure it's at 10%.
Yeah, next year, maybe we only have to go up by a thousand dollars, then maybe next year, it's less.
Okay.
You know what I mean? Just depends on what-
So do we ever take money out if it's over 10%? Or do we-
That's what we're doing now.
We're at four.
We would just do a budget adjustment.
Okay. Okay. And then all the money that is going to be spent out of here, we have to approve, basically.
Yeah.
So I mean, it's, yeah, so it's not like, it's not like it's free from spending.
Oh, I know. I just, I'm with the grant, I just, yeah.
So this is basically, you underestablished a policy. It sounds like you're going to be bringing a bunch more policy into it.
Oh, just did not exist.
Yeah, so we shouldn't have a policy.
So this was the first one. So then we have, I didn't want, I don't want to, like, give you 27 policies, so I'm-
At every meeting?
Like, every meeting, you're probably going to have a policy. Not seven of them, but you're probably going to have a policy. So like, the next meeting, we're going to have a policy on conflicts of interest for A&E projects on transportation, because Caltrans wants to see that, and it's actually a really good idea. So that will be one. We have, we also need to adopt a policy for our enterprise funds, for water and wastewater. We do not have a policy for that. And that's another one, where we've retained and accumulated balances, and that's fine, but that's a worse one, to retain too high of balances in, because we said we have, we need to increase rates, because we have to do all these things. Well, we need to do those things. So we have to invest in those projects. And certainly, I can tell you right now, there's not enough money in either of those funds to do all the things that we actually need to invest in, but we do need to have plants for those. So I'm working with staff on that as well. But we also want to make sure we have a reserve in those as well, because very expensive things go wrong in those plants. It's not a $5,000 problem. It's a $90,000, $100,000 problem. It's not a $5,000 problem, it's a $90,000, $100,000 problem. So those are things we just have to contemplate. Their revenue is far more stable. I mean, it is what it is.
Right. Even if they economy tanks, you still have, you stop your water bowl.
Paint water.
Stop your silver bowl.
Well, that's what we have. Well, unless you don't, but, right.
Okay, public comment? Anybody on this one?
Amy.
Scoville. There's, we have nobody all up in, right?
Sure.
Okay. So we're looking for the approval of Resolution 2331 to establish this policy.
I'll make the motion.
We'll, we'll do it as amended, so we're going to update the.
Yes.
With the 25% as amended.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
From 20 to 25% as amended.
As amended.
How's that?
Yep.
A second?
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Perfect. Item seven is administration report.
Um, okay, so, uh, I am working on a lot of policies. Um, so those will be coming, um, probably on a meeting-by-meeting basis. And, um, those will be, they'll encompass policies, like I said, administrative policies, um, personnel, HR-type policies, um, all different types of policies. And so, um, that's going to be really, really helpful for the public and for staff because it takes all subjectivity out of a lot of what we're doing. Um, and it also makes it where if we need to, if we need to have a conversation on a particular policy, we can just come and limit it to that one particular policy section instead of 50 pages of whatever, um, wherever we have it. So it'll, it'll be, all be a good thing. Um, and again, I'm not a good, I don't like to reinvent the wheel. So we're not the only city that does water or wastewater or police or fire or has employees or anything like that. So it's a lot of best practice, um, what makes sense for us. And, um, and so we're, we're not going, you know, way out and floundering on some of these things. But it's, um, good that we have direction for staff, um, and the public that we can point to. Um, I also did, uh, get a response, um, from Caltrans. They would, I had asked if we could have a, um, follow-up meeting on the 4 and 49 conversation. And it seems like we might be able to meet, um, this week on the 10th at 11:00. Um, I don't know if someone from council wants to be at that meeting.
I would like to attend.
Okay.
10:00 AM?
11:00.
Sorry, on the 10th at 11:00, sorry. Got it.
That's right, I know.
So, um, and it's really just a conversation to go over while that meeting went. Um, just kind of, if there's additional outreach that we can do or help with, um, um, try to get kind of a more solid understanding, I think, for the public in terms of what a project means to the city and, um, growth and traffic circulation within the city. Um, and how, how we can help facilitate those. Uh, so that.
So you all be sure and get your feedback to Rebecca between now and then so that you're being heard. Yeah. And I know they, the members of the public have been diligent about fire and all. Their deadline was last week, yeah.
Uh, two weeks. Yeah. For both everybody. Yeah, which we did also respond. Um, so we had, we had comments, um, from city administration, um, response as well as planning questions, um, for circulation, so that was all in there. And, um, I am, we are working with, um, our city engineer for, um, roads and infrastructure as well as water and wastewater, developing, um, projects related to the storms. So we, we did have some damage, so it's not only damage permanent work that we need to take care of, it's also, um, mitigation problems that we need to be able to, um, apply for so it doesn't happen again. So mitigation funding is how do you invest in the project so we don't have the same, um, failures going forward? So we are working with them on that. Um, I, I did attend a walkthrough this morning at the water treatment plant with, um, a team and Blackwater and, uh, a consultant that I, I am a little bit of a company. But, uh, and Chris O'Forman, our public work superintendent, just to kind of go through a site visit, um, so everybody knows where everything is. Um, it, like, the open clear well does not look like it does on engineering schematic. It just looks like a big circle, so for all you know, it could just be a tank and it's not, it's a giant hole. So, um, so it's important that we kind of walk through everything and it, and it also helps us kind of talk through what those improvements would be. Um, and making sure everybody also contemplates growth. Because what we're talking about right now is just phase one, there's also phase two and phase three. So, um, making sure that that, that's clear, um, in their head so we don't build something somewhere that we need to have phase two to go there. So, um, we did work on that. Um, we were going to be closed this Friday. PG&E was going to come out and connect that generator due to the weather, it hasn't been, uh, postponed. Um, on another PG&E note, uh, we are letting them stage some equipment, um, behind City Hall, um, because of this next storm that's coming up. So we're working with them on where they can stage it. They're basically renting, um, some land space for us. So generating a little revenue off of that and they get to park their equipment there for a few days. And, um, is there anything else? I guess we're going to make a. Um, we have been working on Spring Break and I work, all, um, just on looking at business process reviews. Um, we're really close to, on the I work, of being able to get the portal on our website for, um, the residents to start using to submit, um, work order requests on there. Uh, so that will be exciting, hope we're moving, moving forward on there. We got all of the pavement information in there, so that's really nice. So I just need to work with our, um, city engineer to kind of, uh, convert what the pavement report in terms of condition means in I work because they have a different reading system there. So just making sure it's apples and apples. But that way it'll be easier for staff to clearly identify in what order, um, the, the road maintenance needs to happen. And then, um, earlier this week, I did also meet, uh, over here with the, uh, fire chief and the deputy fire chief, um, and the architect on the fire, um, um, building that is projected over there. We're looking at a couple scenarios for that because of the funding that's coming down related to the disaster. Um, we're going to look at the, the, um, the project as it currently is, which is just a firehouse, um, with CDPG. But we're also going to look at it as a true emergency, um, operations center, um, using a different funding source. So we'll, we'll try both paths, hopefully we get the bigger one. Um, because that would also be a revenue generator for the city. Because we would be able to use it as a training facility, um, for state-wide training. So, um, and then we're not restricted just to fire personnel in there. The police department can utilize it, public works can utilize it, administrative staff can utilize it. Um, so it would be truly a really good regional, um, emergency, um, building campus. So, um, I'm hoping, hoping for that. So we'll be sniffing that and seeing if we can do that. And. Maybe that's about it. Okay.
Uh, council reports, I'd like to start with Isabel.
So we attended COG last week and, uh, it looks like so wagon trails in winter ops mode. They said the eastern half, was it the eastern half of the western side of the eastern Davis?
Mm-hmm.
Um.
I think it's together, right?
It's something like that, yeah. So they're doing environmental studies and archaeological studies and that there were plates on the springs that had been identified. Um, Caltrans reported, they've got their little litter removal program going on. They've also got 100 million, um, in their call to projects which are due April 28th. And there's a local beautification grant, so if you're interested to reach out to Caltrans, they're also doing a workshop on March 15th for the call to projects. Um, there's community days happening the 17th through the 27th. They're hoping to get community involvement in beautification projects. Um, and, let's see, I think that about covers COG. And then in terms of the transit, um, they said that the buses that have been on order for a year, the cost is increasing, as we've talked about earlier.
Mm-hmm.
And so dial ride for disaster recovery, which was going on the first through the 10th, was something that they were involved in. They're, um, prepared for evacuations. I feel like, and, whoop, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, our transit system does a lot and I don't think people are aware of that.
Cynthia does a bang-up job.
Yeah, and they, they had even prepared some, um, little like care packages for people who had been evacuated, which I just think is something that's so nice. And like I said, I, I wouldn't know that, so I think people should know that. Um, they're also, their dial ride for passengers picked up and they, a lot of them were going to warming centers. And they're just trying really hard to stay ahead of the game, especially with all the weather changes. Um, so that's my report on that. And then I know I have LAFCO coming up.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm going to excuse myself. But that's my report.
Thank you.
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move with Russell, you're next.
I don't know anything. I'm going to do anything next week, that's it.
Okay.
Go on.
Um, give me one second, let me go back. Because I don't have one of them. Jen, you were there, because we had you to.
I had you, right, so every time I UWP, I do have some news on that.
Good, because I don't have mine. It wasn't here, I don't know where it went to. Um, Isabel touched on most everything, Cynthia, um, repair transit service, they really do a pretty amazing job. Um, like during the floods, they picked up people in Valley Springs and they had to give them soaking ride. They were wet the whole way. Um, hadn't eaten in hours because it took a long time to get them out. So they created some goodie bags, some socks, some slippers, um, some cliff bars and that type of stuff. So when they go pick people up that are being evacuated, oh, small little blankets, little throws, um, so that they have something with them. Um, and they're being asked to do a lot. And I think John Osborne and everybody are, I think they're doing both. Um, and she, yeah, she hit basically on everything for the council of governments. Uh, I did thank, uh, Marlin and Dennis, were that, or they were on Zoom. Um, I did thank them for the workshop and it was very well-received. And, um, overall, I thought it was a very good and very informative. They had a ton of information there. So I thanked them for that. And past that, Isabel touched on everything else. And I will let you do UWP.
Yeah, so. Um, UWP. Get to my notes here. We. The basic financial reports, operations and conveyance system, water supply report obviously looks phenomenal. Um, we made some basic adjustments on, uh, on job descriptions and some budget adjustments to support those. We did approve a letter in opposition of AV338, which was a prevailing wage for fuel reduction efforts. Um, not in support of that. We created an ad hoc committee for irrigation rates to start addressing what the future holds for, for that, for our irrigation customers.
And I need on the 14th for that.
14th, okay, great.
And the 13th.
Good, good, good. Um, we did, um, approve the application for a CalFire grant for fuels reduction up at like Darby Apple area, which is important because of the wooden plume up that way. We sent our general manager, Joel Metzger, to Washington DC this week, right?
Last week. Last week, this week?
Monday, yeah.
He's going to be in Colorado this coming, towards the end of the week.
So he, uh, went to basically talk about federal disasters and recovery, some grant funding and infrastructure opportunities, being proactive against wildfire in, in rural areas such as ourselves. And then discussing high cost, uh, for agencies when they face a per query licensing scenario. So those were his bullet points that he was armed to go with. And then, um, we did enter into a contract with Emerson Electric to repair and replace our governor on that Murphy's powerhouse.
Powerhouse.
So, I don't know what governor is, it's a little.
He makes electricity, yeah.
Flex capacitor, anyways. I knew it was something.
One point two gigahertz.
It was $288,000 for this thing. Um, and then we did talk about banking decisions.
That was.
Um, go ahead.
Pretty good. It was $288,000 over a five-year CIP.
Correct, yes. Well, it's going to, we're, yeah, we're, we're going to knock it out of the park because that we have 70 grand every year for this.
For the next five years or whatever it is, yes.
Thank you for that. Um, banking decisions, he was looking into some, some, uh, potential switching of banks. And so we told him to consider US Bank, I'm sorry, leaving US Bank and I told him to call. I told him to call and talk to you guys, I don't know if he did, but anyways.
They're looking at.
Yeah.
Uh, they're looking at, um, they're hopefully going to Bank Stockton.
Yeah. They're actually looking at Bank Stockton because we switched it when we moved.
So, um, yeah, and he's, he's kind of trying to focus on interest yield, so.
Yep.
Bank Stockton maybe where he goes.
That'd be awesome.
Um, on UWP, uh, I did meet on, uh, this week with the GPA in terms of all of our, us. So GM, GM, city administrator.
Okay.
So we are, um, talking about trying to figure out how to share. I guess, share the front of trying to find additional funding that can help all three of us.
Right.
Um, through looking at earmarking or just figuring out how we can get ahead of it. Um, because he did identify when he was in DC, um, some appropriations, um, that he could go after. So it's kind of like a top-down versus a bottom-up. So, um, we were going to work on, on that collaboratively to figure out is there ways that we can, um, work on that together?
How do you read me? My, my, my? Good, okay. Uh, that's UWP. Everything else, um, I did attend the Aqua ribbon cutting at the thrift store, the new thrift store in LA. And so did you, so you had, that, that was well-attended, it was a rainy, rainy day, but, um, definitely well-attended.
They're very excited.
They're very excited, they are, so. And couple fundraisers and some historic, I went to the Historic Society, uh, this last week and it was, um, always well, well-attended and interesting. That's it, that's my report. Next week or a week after next, we have LAFCO and then UWP at the end of the month.
Mm-hmm. Oh, I did attend Rotary, asked me to come and speak. Um, so I did go up in, um, after Rotary up in Murphy's, um, and talked about the, you know, Caltrans 4 and 49 project, um, the problems that we have in the city with the first carp and the sidewalk projects and, and the bike and ministering projects that we have going on. Um, just mainly, I think it's important that we have support, not just within the city, but throughout, um, the county, so it was a good, good outcome.
I am speaking at the Republican Party, um, event on the 30th at Greenhorn. I don't know much about it, but I know that myself and, uh, Gary Toffenelli are speaking. So if anybody's interested in coming to that, it's in the fireside room at Greenhorn on the 30th.
What time?
Yeah. I, I don't have a lot of specifics, I think six o'clock, but we'll, we'll know more. I don't, I haven't gotten like an agenda yet.
When you do, can you ask anything?
I would love to, thank you. Okay. Let's go to item number nine, rest calendar.
So you mentioned LAFCO, which is on the 20th.
Mm-hmm.
Um, All Hazards, Grotto on the 14th, then, uh, UWP is on the 28th. Then we're into April, COG is on the 5th, the museum is on the 6th, and then it goes back to All Hazards. Um, we did cancel the planning meeting this week, so there's no planning meeting, um, and that's about it.
Mainly, I think with, uh, just if you hear me, why did we cancel the planning meeting? Uh, it really has to do with, um, making sure that, that meetings are actionable.
Okay. Okay.
And so, because it takes, you know, a lot of staff time in order to have a meeting. So I'm not adverse to study sessions, I just, my preference is to have actionable meetings. And then we'll just, we'll work amongst ourselves on different ways that planning commissioners can get education, that they can report to, to help them make decisions within those meetings, but, yeah.
I understand. Okay, I think that's about it, I'm looking for an adjournment.
So move.
I'll end second. Grattle, I will approve myself.
Aye.
And aye, 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 thank you. 302.